Can we get it done now, or do I gotta wait for the... Wait for something?
You can add it.
We can add it if you do end up...
Just add it. Um, well, I got a couple of changes to the... I gotta request the fire department to move them up as well. So if I can take, uh, item F and move that up on the agenda now.
Are we recording now? Okay.
And then we'll consider the open forum. So I make that motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Iowa, I, Lloyd.
Hi.
So this time we'll entertain the fire department.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for moving me up. Uh, first item is the May Activity Report. I'd just like to make special mention of the acknowledgements to our three newest firefighters, Joe Boyle, Dan Reel, and Steve Schmoll. They recently just completed their entire NFPA 1001 training, um, which has been probably well over 200 hours of training, um, throughout the first part of the year here. So, um, just like to say thank you to them for putting all their time and effort into getting certified and training, so. And then moving on to the next item, um, it's Emergency Management. This was discussed at the Personnel Committee level. So before you tonight is a memo that I drafted, which would bring Emergency Management under the direction of the Fire Department. So your Fire Chief, whoever it may be at any given time, would be the Emergency Manager or the Emergency Management Director. And just kind of orchestrate all the activities of the Emergency Management System with assistance from staff and Steve Berg at the county and other resources. This would make it more seamless, so that we don't have to train somebody who's not accustomed to emergency services, emergency management, things like that, um, because there's a lot of training that would have to go on, and they would have to understand the city, the Fire Department, the Sheriff's Office, everything, whereas the Fire Department already has most of that embedded inside of it, so.
Okay, motion approved. Further memo?
I'll make that mention to approve, uh, the Fire Chief, whoever it may be, to be the Emergency Management Director.
Second?
Oh, second.
Jill?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Iowa, I, Lloyd.
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
What's the priority, Iowa? Emergency Management under the Fire Department.
Uh, next item before you is a recommendation to increase officer pay. Again, this was discussed at Personnel Committee level quite extensively. This is also factoring in the additional, um, Emergency Management duties, so we'd be taking the $1,800 that's currently budgeted and putting that towards salary, um, for the Fire Department officers specifically, um, who will be working together to try and coordinate Emergency Management functions. So here I have the proposed, um, budget, um, what would be coming out of the Fire Department budget and what would be coming out of the Emergency Management budget for the positions. There is one Fire Chief, there's currently one Assistant Fire Chief, and there's currently three Captains. So, um, this would result in no, um, increase into our budget or anything. The money's already there, it's just using the money that's allocated into that budget fund more, um, than what's currently funded.
Motion approved. The Fire Op... The Fire Department Officer pays as discussed in the Personnel Committee and given the memo here.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Department Officer pay.
Second?
Oh, second.
And also, just to clarify with that, um, we've never had anything actually written in stone, so it's been, well, last year it was paid this, last year it was paid that. This will now be, um, memorialized into our, um, policies and operating procedures and stuff, which will actually state what everybody's gonna take and who they're gonna pay by, so.
Does it... Sorry. Does it also say number of assistant chiefs and number of captains that are involved?
That would be up to the chief, but he would need to deal with the budget accordingly, would be my...
So it doesn't require Council approval to increase number of captains or anything, theoretically?
Theoretically, no, it wouldn't. That'd be a personnel thing type thing. So the Council could definitely make mention to a set of chiefs saying, "Well, hey, you don't need 12 captains." That's a little difficult. So... But no, there's never a strict number, so we don't want that, except I need to bring another captain on for another reason, you know, that's it. So, or if I need to get rid of a captain's position or something, which I never would be doing.
Okay, motion is still on the floor. Uh, for approval of officer pay changes. Michelle?
Hi.
Iowa, I, Lloyd.
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jill?
I'm gonna have a statement.
Have a statement. Motion carries for vote. Any other questions or anything? Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, now open forum. For planning commission.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, Travis Millhouse, Iowa, is not open in town here. He's coming up 17 years now. So I just come up here to ask that. I was coming up here to ask you, if we, the old lumberyard site that we bought, I would like to park some cars there before the parking lot is done. And, I mean, I know it doesn't, it's not up to code, but I'm just, I've, in the last forty-five days, I've done a lot of, a lot of in town. I mean, we paved the car wash, we paved the shop, we put a new roof on the lumberyard, put a fence up in the back, I put new doors and windows in, I put concrete in the parking lot, and I just need to start generating some revenue from what I've put into it. And I'm just so congested at the shop, and it, I mean, it makes, it looks better, I'm getting a lot of compliments, I had, I'd really like to be able to use that parking lot for, so I don't see me being able to demo the asphalt up for about a year.
How many cars do you have there right now?
I got ten there right now.
How many do you think you can hold in?
Hope I filled it up. I'm under it.
I know, but I mean, you know, there...
What I'm thinking is about, you know, you know, ten, fifteen over there, I mean, it's a good number of cars to have. I mean, I always keep the park nice, we're trying to keep up on it. You know, it's just me and a couple guys, and we're busy, but maybe do the best we can. So I'm hoping that, you know, you approve me that I can park there until I get a pay. I can't tear the buildings down. I went through the, I haven't got approved from the state yet, at least a couple weeks ago, so as of right now, I can't tear them down. But I'll have to kind of call down there every week and get the runaround, so.
Does it have any concerns with respect to that, to lay on the paving?
Um, it's probably considered a variance from your zoning ordinance. So, um, we probably need to go through that due process, the public hearing, and other plus for unofficial variance.
Jill?
Just keep in mind that you did make the last applicant to pave their parking lot.
Yep.
Nope, I understand. I know that totally, and I mean, I have paved our other parking lots, and one I didn't have to do. I mean, I've done, I mean, I went above and beyond for everything that we've had to do. I'm just asking for another year to be able to pay.
I think we need to put a time description on it if we do that, and then, and you can give us a good timeline of when you're gonna be able to do that.
I mean, I can truthfully say, hopefully by next August, August is what I'm hoping for.
And then we can work that into the, the paperwork as well, so we can get that by my work.
Um, it, that's the formal process, yes.
So do we have a, sir, do a public hearing?
Correct. And the application to do so.
And how soon can we do that?
Um, that application comes in this week, I'm next to planning commission, it would have to be on the July agenda, so we have to publish 10 days prior and send out those people within 350 days. So it would be on the July 20th planning commission and come to your City Council meeting August 8.
So that would be a month and a half away before they can park in that parking lot. So I probably, I know they are, but...
I mean, what I've fallen in town is sometimes it's easier to ask for forgiveness on your mission.
Right. And we don't want that to be the standard.
I know, I understand that totally, because that's, I mean, it's so congested at my shop. I mean, I'd really like to park there, and if we could speed up the process, I'd like to do it.
Okay, so another option would be to request a special, um, planning commission, a special council meeting, a short-term agreement. Statutorily, we still have to meet at publication and notification time, but we could certainly look at calendar availability.
Well, we'll get the application as soon as I can, although at least do it, we'll get it, you know, get it on and go from there.
So just clarification on building demolition, why isn't that possible?
So we called the building inspector, and then we had to go through the state, and then we had to go through the EPA, and it was supposed to be 10 days, I have not heard back from anybody. And what was weird is in between there, they were worried about asbestos shingles. Well, they, in the meantime, I got a roof in from that, so I don't understand, and I guess that's all fixed.
Just, there was an ask, because as part of that variance consideration, we'd look at the other conditions that we originally applied to see if you were looking towards meeting rules or not, and if not, why?
Yeah, yeah, that's why I came here and asked about that.
Can I add something? Just wanna remind everybody that if you call a special meeting, it is at the expense of the applicant, so it would be at your expense.
And what would that expense be?
I believe it's a $500 on our fee schedule.
$500?
It's on our fee schedule, so I believe it's $500.
Then just put me off of the regular meeting.
I just wanna, I just wanna make that clear.
I didn't realize it was that much. I mean, I'll just go on the regular meeting, but I can tell you, in the meantime, I'm gonna have to park there, because I don't have a lot to park at the truck.
I just, I just wanna make that clear, because I know it's on our fee schedule as a special meeting, and I don't want anybody to come back later and say, oh, they didn't pay, and we had to, or, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you, I mean, I don't wanna try, don't wanna hear, but from buying that place and fixing it up and everything that I've done, in about 60 days, I spent almost a quarter million dollars on the new one, and I'm just running low on money.
Do we need a...
Come on, we're keeping you busy.
Do we need a special meeting? Do we need anything to allow, um, parking there in the interim, pending that, you know, variance?
Perhaps just, perhaps just noting that, um, you do not want us to issue a citation until it's resolved.
Essentially what it is, it's a, I mean, it's a technical, I guess, ordinance violation of parking there. You don't enforce all of your ordinances against anybody at any given time, there's nuisances out there, you don't wanna get in the practice of doing that. Here, I think it's well stated what the concerns are.
Right.
You know, there is a definitely good paid effort to get this.
I do think that...
It's just state requirements for publication and such, so.
Okay, that'd be great.
So we need a motion to that effect, then? I have one question.
I wouldn't, I don't think you need a motion to that.
Okay. Would it make any difference in the situation if we could have hurried it up if you wouldn't go on the agenda?
No.
Would it be...
Because we still have that 10-day publication period.
Sylvia? Well, can't we add two years at their application from before when we gave them the right to buy that building and do whatever? Can't we just add that too?
Well, it was two weeks is what we had to park there while we were doing the parking lots, and also we were paving up.
And we discussed the type of the need for paving, and I think, um, no one, additional expenses will come into play, but the original intent was to pave it before parking.
It was, and then soon as we, you know, moved everything on there paving, it just worked out good, and it's, it's easy getting in on my parking lot, marking, marking this parking lot makes it a lot easier, though, because we can cut through there, and I'm, I'm hoping that we can leave it that way, with my license, like, as... I mean, I don't know if you got anything to say about my... As long as it's not affecting my property, you can do what you want. But, all right, yeah, we'll get it on for the special meeting, appreciate the time.
Special...
Not special.
No, not a special meeting.
Not a special meeting.
July.
With an understanding that, you know, violations for parking vehicles that are unpaid until such time as we can resolve the, the CP variance.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I think we're on the making of the city's...
I have a poll here. Mayor and Council, um, this is a tough, couple tough acts to follow, but I'll do my best, and I'll be brief on it. I just wanted to make the Council aware, uh, you know, I presented this to another city, and they were interested in it, the quick legislative update, and a lot of times things are adopted that affect, uh, cities overall. There really was not already anything done, um, in this year's, uh, state legislature. There was a, a tax bill that was, uh, hard to be known by the governor, because you've probably heard of the, the error that, and some of the mathematical computations there. So that, that meant that there was a $20 million permanent LGA increase in that bill, but that has, that treatment's died, uh, so you don't have that. Uh, the one thing that did pass that is of interest to cities in my mind is this, and Joanne had, um, uh, hand out on it a few months ago, I think, uh, mobile residential facilities on properties, and these are basically temporary healthcare dwellings that, um, the legislature basically has allowed governmental units to permit, um, for example, having somebody who needs, um, assistance with two or more, they call it instrumental activities of daily life, they can live, um, in your driveway or something, uh, or another area of the, of the property, um, and basically live in an RV or a modular house or a manufactured house, um, and that will not affect your accessory building limits, um, or technically any zoning limits. And so these are, these are houses that are like 300 square feet max, and they're meant for temporary healthcare dwellings, the caregiver of this person must reside in the same property. So, uh, there's no permanent foundation allowed, they need to connect to water and electric somehow, and there's, with a principal residence, and there's also a sewage requirement, of course, which I won't get into that. And basically, these need to be temporary houses, um, so this is a new sort of scheme that cities and counties are into. However, um, the, uh, legislation basically says that cities shall approve these permits if all the conditions are met, you don't have any discretion about whether you approve or deny these permits unless you adopt an ordinance to opt out of this new program. You have to opt out, you can't opt in, you gotta opt out, and you have to do it by September 1st of 2016. So if somebody would want to take advantage of this and bring to you a permit, uh, you basically have, uh, 30 days to, um, consider it, and if they meet all the conditions, they're very likely gonna get a permit. Now, you can decide to not even allow those by passing ordinance that would opt out of this program, the legal city has drafted a model ordinance. To do that, we could, we could tweak that a bit and have it before you if you'd like, but I don't know what the consensus is in the community, but I presented this to another city, and, um, they were very interested in the opt-out provisions for the various reasons that, that they have in their community. So I just wanted to bring that forth, you have more information. You got positive information from Joanne Hutton as well, and, um, we can discuss it later or just move on, and that's, that's what's gonna happen, so. You may or may not receive permanent applications in the future, so I don't know if you had any reaction to my quick summary on that.
Okay, it's on the planning mission agenda.
They did discuss that already, planning commission did. There was a generic discussion, there was no action that needed to be taken at that time. Correct.
I think we need to go through planning commission first, have that addressed there, and, you know, peel the layers back on that, I mean, decide what we wanna do.
It's really the only interesting thing I know that happened, so I wanted to add that.
You had a RFP discussion?
Yes, I, and so this, this came up in the last Personnel Committee meeting, which I wasn't at, at the end of, so I can say, I had maybe some of the issues presented there in play, or someone else was at that meeting, needs to do that, I can follow that.
The gist of the conversation was primarily that we were concerned with respect to the legal representation of the city, um, given your current situation with family as well, and, and the timeliness of legal documents and returning those legal documents to the city, um, and we were concerned about that, and the city, obviously, um, with understanding for your conditions, but still looking at how we resolve those issues from the city standpoint, really good of the city. I think, does that pretty much cover what we discussed?
Yes.
Okay? Uh, and that was our concern, and the issue of going out for RFP was addressed, um, and that may still be a requirement that the Council wants to do, I don't know what the consensus is there, would probably be a vote to that extent. I think that you have offered some alternatives, especially tonight, as well, as to how that might be approved and how we can ensure that the timeliness is prompted and addressed, so that those conditions are taken care of. We have a lot of legal issues right now that are pending before the city, um, and wanna make sure that those are completed in a timely manner, as well as, um, the union discussions that we have as well, so that those are addressed and, and we can resolve those, I mean, those are some of the looming issues that we have. Further discussion?
Yeah, if I could jump on that, man, that's where, I think those are all points well taken, as, as everyone up here knows, and a lot of people out in the audience know, uh, my wife's gonna have some surgery around Thursday, um, to deal with her breast cancer diagnosis, and so, you know, it's human nature, when you get the situation like that, that you tend to focus only on that and maybe not on some other things, um, and, and I thank everybody for all their purpises and support on that, I appreciate that, and my wife does too. But at, at the end of the day, the city has business that it needs to get done, especially now with some new development going on, land use matters, union issues, uh, there's a, there's a varied amount of things, um, and so all those points are, are really well taken. It's amazing how quick some of these things creep up on you when you're dealing with the crisis, and that's, that's certainly what's happened. So I certainly can't, can't do everything I ever pretended to, and I, I realize that I need to get some assistance on some of these files. You, most of you have met Katie Krantz here in the front row of the audience, and she's attorney at, at the Agroland firm, and she does a lot of municipal work, um, with our cities, is sort of a, it's sort of worked up to a co-council in some cities on the east side, St. Mary's Point, like St. Craig Beach along with St. Craig River, also does a lot of project work for Woodbury, Wyomang, East Bethel. And so she's become well versed in our municipal practice, and I thought this is a great person to introduce to Montrose as, uh, basically, uh, someone who's gonna take a lot of my stuff when I'm assisting at home, and also going forward permanently as an assistant to me. And so getting someone involved like that, similar to how Michael Kane was involved, as you know, my, everybody does, uh, and he left the practice law, uh, toward a nonprofit, so he was a, a very good attorney to work with this, this Council, and I think Katie will be exactly the same way, has a very similar disposition to mine. Uh, we also have another attorney who's assisted in the last labor negotiation session, who they wanted to labor for next day, and, um, so her name is Amanda Prudsmann, and she's taking a lot of the labor in, in union negotiations for, for our cities. We represent about 15 or 16 cities, um, on the civil municipal docket, so we see things that happen, and we apply those to, to our cities that we're working with. So I, unfortunately, if I had to do all over again, I would make this change a lot sooner as far as, not necessarily changing out, but including more members, you know, with Katie and Amanda helping, that's gonna be, I think, a much smoother situation in the city than me trying to juggle all these, all these juggling balls at once with my, with my wife's health condition. So that's, that's, that's one of the implementations I'd like to do, I had a nice talk with Michelle about this this afternoon as well. Another thing, too, is just the communication process. One of the good things about including other attorneys in your, in your clients is that they sort of adopt the things that you've been doing that are good, and one of the things is, I passed out this, this email, sort of a legal, Montrose legal report, I gave one to Maggie for the, kind of the public proceedings of the packet as well, so that will be, those will be recorded in there, um, and just basically saying what's, what's going on in the city, and provide this, um, in a little bit more timely basis as far as, in, in other cities, for example, I include these in the packet, um, the public information that I can, um, in the packet with the city council to, to consider, so like an attorney's memo, so when you hit my, my point on the agenda of the city attorney, uh, that memo would already be in the packet, and I'd take questions on that, you'd have a chance to read it beforehand, um, and then we can do a quick back and forth, we don't wanna take up the whole meeting, but certainly I'd be able to do that, because when all of us are together, it's, you know, only once a month really, once we do some sort of special session, so that's the time, that's the time to do it. So that's another thing I'd like to do, to, to implement. I passed around Katie's business card, and if we have, for example, some sort of meeting next week with the applicants, the nominees that we talked about tonight, um, she very, she would probably be in that, in that meeting, or maybe, maybe for, for me as well. I will be at, I plan to be at the next meeting, negotiation meeting on 20, so that's, I'll just say that right now, so.
Given that Amanda is out on maternity leave, when do you expect her back?
I can find that out for you. She didn't, didn't seem to be too wanting to stay the whole three months, because maybe she thought she'd give up or something. I'm not, I'm not sure how that works, so I don't know how long, but I can find that out for you for sure.
It was good to have the, the labor background.
Yeah.
You know, and I don't know whether you've got someone who has that background as well that could also help with that, that would be good, and I might have labor background as well, uh, and that would certainly be helpful for us.
Right.
She was able to put some points out there that, you know, from my standpoint, were, were very helpful, and I appreciated that, um, and if we have that flexibility, that would be good as well. I don't know whether Katie has a labor background or not, I'm not sure, but...
Well, I think we all, we all dabble in that, and we certainly have most, there are some other senior attorneys who I think do as well, so I can, I can discuss that with them, too.
That'd be great.
You know, we, without getting too far into it, we might be at, at the tail end of one and the beginning of the other, so this is a time of the conversation, yeah, as far as the labor part of it. But we, yeah, sorry, I won't get into the point on that.
Further discussion?
Well, I think, given that, I mean, we're talking about a contract with them, so, so I don't think there's a reason to go in for RFP in this long time, given our standing, but I do expect better communication, I would say, going forward.
That's on, I think, on both parts, because I don't think Andy was... Agreed, under the assumption that there was a problem. Correct.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good question to ask, because, um, you know, I haven't felt very comfortable for a while, given the whole personal situation, but I think, I think there's an endpoint to that, this week, we'll, we'll have a, like, end of the tunnel. So, uh, I, I knew I was sort of, you know, yeah, I had to get to that, I had to get to that, but I have this, you know, appointment to run to, or doctor appointment to run to. Well, now I can, um, it's, it's past time for I involve Katie or Amanda or somebody else as well, you know, we have 17 lawyers, we have 13 of us at the municipal at one time or another, so we have plenty of options, and I did not know the, the extent of it until, um, last week, and I had some discussions, and so I appreciate knowing that now, and I worked, I worked like half of the weekend to kind of clear my docket and all my clients, so, 'cause I'll be out, just officially, I'll be out starting on Wednesday, and then probably going until July 1st, but last week of June, I'll be able to, not going anywhere, I'm just, and of course, everybody has cell phones and laptops with them all the time, but I can use that if Katie's copying on something, I can send that to her myself, but if staff could do that as well, that'd be appreciated. So I, I appreciate the flexibility, this is, I'm kind of embarrassed to be the, the subject of something on the agenda, so.
No, but we, we also appreciate the family situation as well, and, and, you know, hearts and hearts and minds, uh, like I said, I just, we need to look at how we'll work through that process, and that's good, and I think it's a viable solution to put that on paper. Thank you very much. And I think we're ready, Sylvia? Parker, ready?
On page 233 is the minutes from our June 6th meeting, uh, if you have any questions, and we were going to get Christina Bedfield on board if the Council approves.
Do you need a motion?
I need a motion for that, we do.
All right, I need that.
That'll be, that'll be up next. I have a little memo to present, if that's all right.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Sorry. So, who will you have with the minutes?
Well, I think they've already read them, I'm not gonna run them over, so that we get done quicker.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, thanks. Let's move on to the park commission afternoon for Christina Bedfield.
Okay, so, staff recently received an application for the park order commission. Her name is Christina Bedfield. Just a little information on her, she lives on Clemente Avenue in Marysville Township and has lived in the area for about twenty-four years. In two thousand and sixteen, the city ordinance was changed to allow for up to two members of the commission to be residents from a neighboring township. The council deems such arrangement more representative. She volunteers with other local organizations, such as FEED, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and the DFW. She's interested in serving on the park commission because her kids use the city parks, and she would like to offer suggestions on how to improve the overall experience of users. If appointed, she would be able to commit to the park commission schedule, meaning every first Monday of the month. There are four vacancies on the park commission at this time. City Clerk Treasurer Margaret McCallum, Commission Chair Sylvia Henry met with Christina to do a short interview. They think that Christina would fit involved with the commission, as a commission or another commission.
And I know that Christina has a strong commitment to the community. She works at one of our local businesses. She is actively involved in both Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, and the community, and the school. So, I think that that would be a good fit. Any other discussion? Most are approved?
I make the motion to approve Christina as a park commission member.
Second?
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Most carried by a vote of two, Christina Bedfield, a member of Park and Rec Commission. Okay, twenty-sixteen fifteen.
So, in front of you is resolution number two-thousand-and-sixteen dash fifteen. It's a resolution proclaiming July as Park and Recreation Month. I believe this was discussed at a Park and Rec meeting, at the last Park and Recreation meeting. If anybody wants to, who was at the meeting, wants to go into further detail.
Discussion? Most are approved?
I make the motion to approve, approve resolution twenty-sixteen dash fifteen. July is Park and Rec Month.
Second?
I'll second that.
Lloyd? Lloyd, I vote aye.
Aye. Sorry.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, most carried by a vote. July will be Park and Recreation Month. Down to engineering, I believe.
No, we're at Park and Rec.
Arborfield, I'm sorry. Yes, no, sorry.
I have been asked by the coaches that are, that play out at Arborfield, if we could get sand brought out there due to home base, home base, pitcher's mound, and second base are all, like, currently, right now, tonight, they are underwater with the rain, so therefore the sand washes away, and the mounds are not, I don't know anything really about baseball, but the mounds are not leveled to where they should be, so we need sand brought out there, because right now the kids, you know, can twist an ankle, do whatever. So, I'm asking council approval to have sand brought out to Arborfield. I have no idea what the cost would be. Sean, do you know what the cost might be for that?
We have some on hand. We've already done it once this year, and we'd certainly go back and add more.
Then he just answered, does it need some fill as well?
It's, it's cross limestone is actually what it is.
Okay. So, that doesn't really wash that easily, does it?
Well, since we put the ice skating rink there last winter, there was some erosion on the field there, and we filtered in once prior to the season, and I have an agreement, I was out there this morning, and there was some water standing around second base, and as soon as it dries up enough to work it up, we'll put some more up there.
Okay. I don't think you need to vote for that, do you?
No.
But... Now, engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Goldsall. I think I have, hopefully, three brief items. First one is AUAAR update, you're all aware of that, we talked about it at length, by workshop, and I think another council meeting, so are you approved or do you see this happening to plan? Update, and I would recommend that you do the same for the AUAAR update. If you have any questions, I can certainly answer.
Discussion? What was that meant to cost, is that...
Uh, the estimate is five thousand seven dollars off.
Five thousand to seven thousand?
That's correct.
And why is this needed?
Um, it's a requirement, if the AUAAR is currently not effective, and melt it would come in. First state statute, it has to be updated every five years to be remain in effect.
So, we technically really didn't need this AUAAR to begin with, did we?
That's correct. There is no requirement for the state to have AUAAR. That was the workshop that went over, kind of resented the benefits of doing the AUAAR that we went over in detail, so...
What was the benefit?
What's the benefit?
What was the benefit of this AUAAR?
Well, I guess, how long of a...
What's the...
I think that was explained, if it had a meeting, that we had a special meeting.
It was.
It was, and I think it was quite in depth. It entails how the plan for the city is addressed over the next twenty-five years, and how the subdivision's fit together, and how the collector roads and all the roads and all the planning pieces fit together, so that developers need to have conformity, and we have a document that shows developers how we want them to develop those areas based upon the plans of the city and the vision for the city. The other piece of it is, is that if, granted whether or not the two-hundred-and-fifty K that was spent on the AUAAR is watering the bridge, that was spent. It was a good idea when it started in two thousand and seven, or two thousand and six?
Six.
Two thousand and six. By two thousand and seven, it was no longer a good idea, but it was already done. The piece that's important now is that we have an AUAAR that's going to be out of date, and we currently charge developers for the use of our AUAAR. If it's out of date, we cannot recoup any of that money that was spent that's under the bridge now. So, in order to recoup any monies for the future developments, we need to make sure that it stays current. So, it's in our best interest to make sure that it stays current, so that we can continue to charge for the use of the AUAAR, which is required for developers. That kind of put a gist on it?
That's a good summary, Mayor. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to be...
No, you're fine.
I just didn't expect the question, and I guess I wasn't sure if you had questions regarding the workshop.
I mean, I know we were in long discussion, the special workshop and stuff, but that one wasn't on our record, and I just wanna kind of...
Oh, okay.
Clarify.
Yeah, I have the memo in here, kind of clarifies the scope of the services, I guess you might say, but it doesn't probably talk as much about your question there, and I apologize, I left that off, because it was all workshop. That was, that was a good summary.
Okay, so then I just...
I was listening, I think.
You had it well.
I think I was listening as well, but, as I stated, I wanted it on the actual record. Why would we have it in the process of it? But then, as I look in the Abner Lighter deal, it says it is possible the city may begin levying for this fund. Can you clarify that?
Uh, the city may begin levying for it?
Well, on page eleven of the management letter from ABNO, it says it is possible, the city intends to eliminate the AUAAR fund deficit with future development fees. It is possible the city may begin leveling, leveling, levy, sorry, for this fund as well.
That's, this only means that we have that option if we want to do that.
And that was a statement...
It would have to become a vote in order to do that.
Right. We would have to have a approval.
So, what they do is they tell the state, this is how you're going to eliminate, it's not really a debt. We've paid for this a long time ago. It's just carried there so that when we did development, we could show how we're paying, how we're paying ourselves back for it.
How it recoups the funds.
Right. And so, when you, when you tell the state, you spent this money, and this is how you plan on recouping it, they're saying, it's gonna be recouped through development, but if the city wants to, they could levy for it. But we've never discussed levying for it.
Currently, they're billing, what, a hundred and fifty dollars per acre?
For development.
Based on the use of the AUAAR.
It's no different than a general obligation bond. If you go out and do an obligation bond based on enterprise bonds, and you can't make that in the enterprise bonds, you have the right to levy that.
Correct.
Has that statement in every, it's not like this was the first time it was listed in there.
No. Excuse me, we have this down. Why don't we follow it? You know, we wouldn't have that problem we had over at the solar farms there.
It was followed, that's the plan we had.
Right.
We hung it right in the middle of it. Now, we gotta make an exception there, because they, did you get them to move it over? Did you get them to move it over?
What's that?
The solar farm, so it's not under the roadway now?
We accommodated the solar farm and the roadway, and we're working together on that issue. Had we not had that planned in place, we wouldn't have known that there needs to be a collector road through there. So, that's what we had to follow.
You were in on that, and you're the one that instigated that AUAAR plan. Why wasn't that brought up at the time? Why didn't you, why didn't you bring that up during those discussions with solar farm?
I was brought up, the first time I ever heard, first meeting I ever heard about solar farm, the collector roadway was brought up.
Yep, it was in the initial plan, that this, the collector road was in the initial plan.
It's been discussed.
Had we not had the AUAAR, we would not have had a leg to stand on, be able to address their plan as to how we wanted it to fit the city's need for a collector road there. Okay, but then I heard that we were gonna ask them to move over further east, so it would be out of the...
They requested that, they wanted the road moved further east than what they wanted shown, so we accommodated their request, actually, on that.
But still maintain the collector road through that.
Still maintain the collector road.
So, if that gets developed in the meantime, then they'll go right through the middle of the solar farms?
No, no. Goes around the east side of the solar farm.
So, we moved the road, right?
Well, the road, the road had basically two tie points, and it could go anywhere, more or less, it's got design constraints in between there, but it's gotta connect into Highway twenty-five at Seventh Street, and it's gotta connect into Highway twelve at Zephyr Avenue. And in between there, it has to avoid wetlands as much as possible, it has to meet state aid design requirements for alignment and vertical curves, so there's, based on the design speed of the roadway, it has to have, you know, certain curve between there that meet those requirements. So, really, anywhere in between there, and that, that's where the AUAAR identifies that a collector road of this nature needs to go through there. It doesn't lay out exactly where everything goes exactly. That's final design, and that doesn't happen until, that's the part, that's a part of the final design. So, so it's, it's conceptually there, it's a concept design of what the AUAAR is. Then, when a developer comes in, such as the solar farm, then you move to a second step, and really, that's what we did during the back and forth of the solar farm site, is, okay, we know we need a collector roadway in here somewhere, it can go here, it can go here, it can go here, it can go here. How can, how can we meet your needs, the solar farm needs, as well as meet the city's future needs as well? And so, that's why we went through and did another, more detailed design of that roadway with respect to pography and curvature and their site to accommodate both at the same time. So, that's what we worked through.
Further discussion?
Yeah. So, with all of this, this is all for planning and development and all that stuff, how is it that Montrose is the only city around that has this? Why doesn't any other, why didn't any, I mean, what happened, you know, we can't recoup the money, but I'm just curious as to why no other cities really have?
Montrose is not the only one that has an AUAAR.
Well, I called four other cities surrounding us, nobody really knew what it was, except for one.
Right, I'm not, yeah, I mean, there's other cities, maybe not right around in Wright County that have it, but it's a popular, was a somewhat popular planning tool in the, in the metro, for sure, I know. And the thing with the AUAAR is, and I've talked about this a little bit during the, during the workshop, but the faster you grow, and the AUAAR takes into effect the cumulative impacts of development. So, if you have one development going on at a time, or have it going in somewhat of a sequential order, then it's easier to manage that development, and the reviews that go with each individual development are more effective. What was happening back in the early two thousands with Montrose, and when you look at a map and look at all the developments that was being proposed at the same time, they were here, and they're here, and they're here, and they're here, and they're here, and they were taking, they were, there was a, the proper environmental review had been done for each one, but there was nothing saying what is the effect of each one of those added altogether. That wasn't, that wasn't being looked at. And, and we knew it was gonna be, we knew, and the council knew, and staff knew, that it was gonna be an issue, if you take all these developments and develop them all at the same time, there's gonna be traffic issues. You know, you look at one development here, and how does that affect traffic on Highway twelve and Clemente Avenue and County Route twelve? Well, it's not, it's not hugely substantial, but you take that, type ten different developments, it's very substantial, and the level of service for those roadways are gonna be effective greatly. So, that's what that, that's what the AUAAR tool does.
Does Buffalo currently have? I don't believe they have an AUAAR.
They do not have an AUAAR at all.
Can I add something? With all the development that's going on, and roads and all that stuff, how are they doing anything without this?
They have comprehensive planning that does something similar, is one tool, plus they have, there's not a lot of development on there right now.
Well, over the past, when, you know, ten years, have you, have you, so I, out of curiosity, has anybody driven, and this isn't to you directly, but that new railroad crossing by Target in Buffalo has had several issues, or it stays down. There is absolutely no way out, if you're waiting at that crossing, current, take it out. And so, it makes you wonder...
So, if they were to have an AUAAR, wouldn't that happen?
I don't know. And we won't know that answer, but maybe the media's one has been created differently, in such a way where you could turn around if that crossing gets stuck down. Because I've sat there, we're probably close to a half an hour, literally stuck, unimpeded.
I'm gonna interject something.
That's gonna be solved when they get the...
Clearly. More of a community that's on the block, that's where they're at.
I don't want to get solved, that's gonna take care of it.
You're not gonna need a red bell right there. No, I'm not. No, that's, that's...
They are, I remember.
I thought from that hot tub, the way I was on by Target. Target. Would you levy the development?
We need to get back on task.
Right, I'm just caring, because, you're right, we're not by the boat, but then we decided not to do it. We did, and that's, that's all we can do right now. So, now, actually, I wasn't a part of that, my question is now, and unfortunately, some of you may not agree with this, but there was an email that was sent to us with multiple, multiple questions. Did any of us really look at how to answer these questions? Did we look?
Yes, I did. Did he get it?
I'm sure it was forwarded to staff. I understand it was forwarded to staff, but as a council, did we all look into it? I mean, I took the time to call the different cities, see what they knew, see how they implemented, see what they've done. As a council, did we do that, or did we just hand it over to staff? Did you offer that information up to any other council member? But you haven't given all of us about the information that you obtained, when you called the other cities. We're discussing it now. Oh, okay. Yes.
I think that the subject here is, do we need to do the update of the AUAAR? If we don't do the update, we don't recoup our money.
Exactly.
When we did this in two thousand and six, we had, at one time, we had five preliminary plaques in here, and we had two developers arguing where the roads were gonna go, and they weren't going to put them in. They, this one said, I'm putting it here, and this one said, I'm putting it here, and they weren't even gonna connect. they weren't even gonna connect. And thus, going forward, I mean, Brad sat down at that time, Brad Will sat down with staff and council and said, what do you wanna do to resolve all this? Or we said, how do we resolve this? And the resolution was, if you're gonna keep growing this fast, this is what you can do. Did anybody in two thousand six have an idea that the development was gonna stop in two thousand seven or eight? No. Like I said, we had five preliminary plaques on the table at one time. So we were as fast as we were growing, the only thing we could do to manage it was to have a plan. We have the plan in place, unfortunately, everything stopped. It'll probably start again soon, but it stopped, but now in order to keep, to get the money back, we have to keep it current or we lose the two fifty.
How much are we?
We spent it, it's, it's been spent.
I understand that, but it's gonna cost, say, seven thousand dollars. So we're gonna stack two, two, we've got, we've got two hundred and fifty thousand into it already, we're gonna add another seven thousand dollars onto it. What are the odds we're even gonna recoup the seven thousand dollars that we're gonna spend? In this year, we'll say.
In this year, no.
Right, and then five?
I don't know. Do you, I don't, I don't have a magic ball.
Correct.
I mean, if we wouldn't have a magic ball in two thousand six, we didn't know not to do it. We didn't have a magic ball and we don't have one now. The, the point is, you've spent, the money's been spent by the city. No, it wasn't your council, I couldn't make that decision either. Bolden made, didn't make that decision, it was the previous councils that voted on it. It's been spent. But now do you just let it go and you throw off the two fifty or do you use the document and you get it updated?
Yes, and I think we all need to take a look at the economic situation, um, not only in our surrounding area, um, but the country as a whole, and things are very much on the rise and there is no reason why we should not do it. Because then that's just essentially saying, well, we could have five more people coming in to develop five different areas and now we're gonna have fights on where the roads are gonna go or what's gonna go where.
We have a developer that's looking at the preserve and right now, one of the comments we made the other day was, you know, we're, in the original plaque and in our, in our A U A R, we state this section is part, is part, and we'd like to see that. So we have something we can work with.
And I think, well, yes, and I think we just need to keep an eye on the economic conditions too, because, I mean, that's just something that requires us keeping an eye on things to have the most information to make the more decision. So if it's not updated, it's not usable at all. So if this developer wants to do whatever he wants on it, he can. We cannot reference the A U A R in any way, shape or form.
Developers can't do anything without the council group.
It's, it's usable, the information is always gonna be there. However, it's not usable from the standpoint of it will not, it will not help, it will not satisfy the requirements, the state requirements for the developer to do his own environmental review. So he will have to do his own environmental review, so we can't charge him for the environmental re, we, review that we did that he can't use. I mean, he can use the information, but it won't satisfy the requirements. So he'll have to go and pay to do his own review.
Which means we recoup our money?
So, yeah, which means we, and it's a hundred and fifty, the current, the current fee is a hundred and fifty dollars per acre. So you were asking a question earlier, you know, how might we recoup even the seven thousand dollars? Seven thousand divided by a hundred and fifty dollars is forty-seven acres. So if we, if we had one plat, I mean, usually the smallest residential development, like if you do a, a chunk, is forty acres, is, at least back in the last few towns, a forty-eight development or plaque. So we recovered all the, but the forty.
So, I'll give those dollars, we would get that. But that was paid for the update.
We won't be charging the preserve because the city.
The city.
Who, who sets the fee amount?
The fee amount was set by council back in, there's a resume.
So why can't we change the fee amount to help you recuperate all the, at expense?
I think it could certainly be revisited.
And I think about the time it should be.
Yep.
Well, that's just to recoup the seven thousand dollars.
No, that would help recruit the rest too, but I mean.
Yes.
We'd have to recruit the interest of.
Yep.
There's no interest on it now, it's paid already. There's no interest.
No, it's not a bond, not a court.
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
It was paid for out of our general fund.
It was paid for out of the general fund, it's paid.
I mean, any city could have done this in two thousand six and ran into the same exact problem that we did. There's no way to tell.
But they didn't do it for some reason.
Well, there was no, because some cities, our city was just gullible and gave it ultimately.
Montrose, I'm sorry to say, is open for that, that's easy payment, that's why the solar farm.
You're right.
And the others, the cities that got turned down.
But there were certain, that's, that's not.
You gotta understand, when this happened, why they went to the A U A R. There was a hundred and fifty acres over here, there was two plaques over there that were over a hundred acres, plus the preserves. If you guys weren't, if they didn't start doing something, that council at that time and the engineer and everybody else was getting swarmed, this town was growing by a hundred units a year.
Yep.
That's why they did this, to help control the growth and it get the city input into the growth market. And that's why it was done.
The reality is.
That was a lot of money.
In two thousand six, it was a good idea. In two thousand seven, two thousand eight, it was no longer a good idea, but the money was already done. The worst is we're out of the bar. The question we have now is, are we gonna continue to look at the past or are we gonna look at the future? And the issue we have is that if we look at the future, we've got a planning document that's already been paid for. Do we keep it current, be able to recoup the money, part of the money for it? Or do we throw it all under the bridge? And that's the question that's before you. Do you wanna go in there and say, yes, let's keep it current, it's a good planning document, we can use it and we can recoup money and bill the developers for that portion that was completed previously? Or do we throw everything out and say we don't want it because we're really pissed off they did it in the first place? And that's the question that's before you.
Further discussion?
Can I just get an answer on the email question? If anybody did look into that?
I looked into the history on all of it, all the A U A R and what happened with it because of the questions that came up. That was important for us, so what happened with it, why it was done, the reasons for it, the history behind it and how we planned to recoup it.
Well, and I felt like all the information that he was acquiring of it was discussed in that social meeting that we had. Clarifying all of it. Was there a response from any council member besides staff? Cause the, the email was originally directed at the council, not staff.
It was a data request, that's why it went through staff.
Right.
It was a data request, there's.
I understand that, but it still came to council. Did any council respond to that? Why would we respond to a data request? Cause it wasn't, because it still came to us, did you acknowledge the saying, we have forwarded this on and, and? And did you not? So.
The answer was, I responded, I supported on.
Yes, I asked, right, and I believe maybe Maggie and said, did somebody let him know that this is in process? And the answer to that, that I received was yes, therefore I did not find it necessary to also respond to him and say, yes, we received your request, it's in process, when he already got that. Right, wrong or indifferent? Okay. That's what was done and that's what I would continue to do.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
To, um, update the A U A R, that would be.
Update the A U A R.
I'll make the motion to update the A U A R. I will second.
Michelle, a second?
Yes.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion carries five o to update the A U A R. White Hill Ridge.
All right, um, as you are probably aware, the wear course for White Hill Ridge, uh, was the final lift of the two, there's two lifts of pavement that always goes on in the street and, um, it's kind of practice to put on the base course first and then put the wear course down the following year or two later. Um, and in the part of that downturn that was not uncommon, there's a lot of developments like this in the area where the developer left, um, and never paved the, the final lift of pavement. Um, so that's where we're at right now. We have tried to, I guess it's been the case since two thousand seven or whenever development was built. Um, throughout the years, we've tried to get all the developer and get them to pave it, obviously the developer, I think that, I believe went into bankruptcy, it was owned by a bank for a while, um, now it's owned by Source One Capital. Reached out to them most recently here a couple months ago and asked them what their plans are for the development, told them the road really needs to get paved really And unfortunately, we don't really have any recourse, financial, there aren't any financial security in place anymore. Letter of credit is, is long expired and we don't have the letter of credit, so we have no way of trying on it. Um, really, the, the only remaining thing that, that I'm aware of to, to put the wear course down and, and get it funded by the people that live in the development would be a special assessment, four twenty-nine process. Um, where we would, we would assess those costs to each individual lot within the development. There's twelve units that are already built in there, so they would have to pay those assessments as well, but then the rest of the lots are all owned by this Source One Capital Development. Um, in, in looking at the roadway, it is something that does need to be addressed sooner than later. It is starting to see significant signs of stress, um, especially that first portion there where you see more traffic, garbage trucks into that entry. So I do feel it's important that we, uh, we address this. And in order to proceed with the four twenty-nine assessment process, the first step of that is to order a feasibility report. That's a state statute process, that's all laid out and that's the first step that's required as part of that. So council wanted to proceed with, with the, looking at the improvements and looking at funding it that way, that would be, that would be, the first step was to order us to complete that feasibility report, which lays out the costs, um, lays out the approximate cost to each lot and, um, and what the proposed improvements would be. The cost of that report is three thousand, about three thousand dollars. And then, um, I would propose that we do it for both first and second phase addition. The second addition doesn't seem quite distressed that the first addition is because you can really see traffic back there, however, I think now would be an appropriate type of look at that, um, before any homes are built back there, because then, um, there's no issues. I mean, now that all the lots are under one ownership, that would just be, seem like the best time to proceed with this and get this done. So that if anybody does buy a lot of future back there, the assessment is already in place, they, they're fully aware then of the, of the costs associated with it.
Is, is this something that probably should have been done, this sort of letter of credit?
Um, well, the letter of credit was, was, I think, you know, I don't even know all the details on that, but I know the letter of credit was, I believe, a renewing letter of credit, um, they were supposed to renew it every three years, developer, and the developer never renewed it. Um, so that's, that's what happened on that, my knowledge.
Yeah, and I, and Justin, I, I did some research for this, um, a few years ago now and I found those letters and as Justin stated, that's, that's accurate where the developer did renew. Now we have a, that's the thing in place where it requires staff review of any letters of credit or performance bonds and attorney review and they need to be either like, um, sort of, uh, automatically renewing, pretty easy word to say, uh, automatically renewing and so there's no, you just take it out of the, the possibility that somebody will forget to do it because, uh, it might be a little more expensive to get those, I'm not sure, but that just is a cost to do a business where you can't, cause now we're sitting here with a worthless piece of paper that expired back two thousand seven almost, it was a very long time ago when that letter of credit expired, so we're not gonna do that.
Wasn't there a discussion in reference to them, uh, Source Capital or Source with Russian Capital paving the first portion of that where the final homes have been built? Did they renegotiate on that?
I, not aware of, I guess I'm not aware of that discussion.
I thought that they had agreed that they would do that first portion and put this, the wear code on, on top of the first portion that was built.
I think, uh, Mr. Rudeman that lived out there said he had talked to somebody and I'm not sure, because anytime we talked to him, they were not.
They were not, but that's where I had gotten this from, Mr. Rudeman.
My fear is if we wait longer, it's gonna cost.
A lot more.
It's gonna cost over double. Well, I know it's gonna cost over double, I think it's, we're, I'm gonna be serious, it's gonna, it's gonna be both, both lifts.
And we were able to assess a hundred percent of this, right?
Yeah, cause it would be considered a new roadway, in my opinion, and, uh, new roadway for the assessment policy is a hundred percent success.
Okay, any other discussion?
And that would cost a quarter as well.
Any other discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion to, um, have Justin go forward with that piece of the one you reported.
Second?
I'll second.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Melissa?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion carries five o to move forward with the assessment, feasibility study.
Last item on the list is the Rolling Metals Greenway Corridor. Um, we've been working on the plat, uh, per previous discussions to acquire some of the property from Mr. Brummer. I met with Mr. Brummer, an additional time ago on the site, and if you wanted to look at some more details there. One of his remaining questions was that he was looking for clarification on was the future roadway connection, um, of Breckenridge Lane and Emerson Avenue, um, would connect Rolling Metals Development to, uh, Forest Creek. Uh, shown in red there would be the roadway area. Mr. Brummer was asking if the city were to construct that roadway as part of their capital improvement plan prior to him or another person being ready for development. Would Mr. Brummer be assessed for the costs for that roadway? Um, so I guess I'm posing that question to the council. That's a, that's a decision that the council can make, whether they want to assess those. I will have to say that Mr. Brummer is looking, I believe he's looking to, to not even assess for those costs, yet the city does it ahead of time. But if he was ready to develop, uh, the, if he was ready to develop, put in lots there, build a roadway, then he would have to build a roadway at his own expense. So basically it would be a deal where whoever built the roadway first would pay for it. Um, he has given a fair amount of land to the city at no charge, so it's kind of a, kind of exchange.
Yeah, for sure. If you look at, um, if the road is, is built before he's ready to tender that property for development, that we would allow a reduction of the assessment based on the value of the land that's been tendered to the city or has been given to the city?
That would certainly be an option, you know, similar to what we did on Third Street South.
But he probably wouldn't want a road built through there to interfere with the farming process until they're ready to develop?
Um, actually that roadway is on the gravel, it's kind of a gravel roadway right now cause we have utilities under there, so that area is actually not being farmed right now.
I think we should look at what their property value of the land that's being donated to the city is and, and offer that as an option, that if we do build it prior to that, that we would not assess, you know, anything, you know, except what's over and above that cost.
Would, uh, would you consider a deferred assessment agreement where we wouldn't assess them until it's such time that they develop it or would you want to assess them immediately?
That's a possibility too, I mean.
I mean, I would be willing to work with them on that considering he was giving us.
Giving us a lot of land.
Red large chunk of land, it's not, you know, just a little bit here and there.
I think that would be good. At least we can propose those options, do it and see how it goes, but I think that.
What benefit will it lead to the city to go ahead where they have it?
Well, it's, uh, it's primarily transportation related with portable vehicles and for roadway or for trails for bikes and pedestrians. I know it's been identified in the parks plan as a, as an important trail connection, um, to connect the park property and really the developments, the Forest Creek developments and the rest of the city. You know, it is kind of a roundabout way. There is some advantage for secondary fire access there as well, I mean, they do have secondary fire access through there now, there's gates and probably not really the best of conditions, especially in the winter time, trying to get through there. So I think for a transportation perspective, it would be a really, really nice connection in between there, um, as well as White Hill Ridge. I mean, at some point, there'll be more homes up there, White Hills well. So I think the connection of those developments and the rest of the city is important. That'd be the advantage.
We need, we need a motion on that, we're gonna report back, right?
No, I guess I can report back. So, um, the council would like to assess it. It's, it's a deferred assessment, but it would be less, uh...
Less valuable.
Less evaluation of the property being...
Because you're saying deferred assessment plan, that doesn't correct lower the assessments and just takes the time, you know, farther out for that. But combination of both, basically, is what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what I'm understanding, correct?
Yeah. I think that sounds...
Okay, Bill? Anyone else? And we'll be turning to that. Okay.
Could we have that in form of a motion? It's more than likely, I guess. If I'm gonna start talking to a lot of it, I think it'd be, I'd like to make sure that the council is in agreement with that as a whole.
Motion of intent to operate deferment of assessment for the future roadway, um, between Breckenridge and...
Emerson.
Emerson. Minus the estimated cost of the land that's being given or donated to the city.
I'll second that.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
I vote aye. Michelle?
Aye.
And Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries five vote. Am I good? Okay. Randy Sanitation?
All right, in front of you is the Randy Sanitation contract. It's been renewed by both Randy Sanitation and by our legal counsel at the April 11th meeting. Proposals are received, and the city council determined to contract with Randy's starting, uh, I think it was May 20, May 31st or June 1st. Um, so this contract is just the contract between both parties to be approved.
Question? You said they need to go deal with this?
Yes.
Make sure it's...
Yep.
Motion to approve?
I want a motion to approve the, uh, Randy Sanitation contract.
Second?
I'll second.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion carries five vote to approve Randy Sanitation contract. That was for five years, right?
Yes.
Liability coverage.
This is just the, um, standard housekeeping. Every year, we need to do this. It's our renewal form for our insurance. It is just to state that the city does not waive the monetary limits on the tort liability, which means, um, in any case, a single event, if there was something that we were, had to pay, it wouldn't exceed $500,000. If, as long as you don't waive it, the max would be $500,000. If you waive it, I think it's up to like $2 million, plus you have to take our additional insurance policy, so. We've never, in, in the, in our past, it's always been denied.
Discussion? Motion to approve?
I want a motion to approve the, uh, Randy Sanitation contract.
Second?
Me? Jill?
Lloyd?
Aye.
I vote aye. Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
And Jill?
Yep.
Motion carries five vote. Upcoming meetings?
Uh, we have the planning commission on Wednesday at 7 o'clock. Here we have, um, the Highway 12 Coalition, um, meeting at City Hall at 6:00 on Wednesday. Uh, we have Personnel Committee next Monday at 3:00. And then we have union negotiations next Monday at 4:00.
Could you say how we found the coalition?
I mean, Highway 12 redevelopment. Yeah, oh, and I'm sorry.
Okay. And then we're getting worked on here?
Yeah, we will work with his attorney to get any means of that.
I mentioned the League of Insocieties Conference, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Scott Byerbooth, we had a Jeopardy game. I won't be there, but...
That's, that's better than... Anything else? Acknowledgements?
Um, I want to acknowledge staff for, again, doing a great job at the fire and our plugging, our audit, and, um, the fire department for recently the incident over the head crosswind part and dealing with that.
That's what I was gonna say, Michelle.